To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Power heads, dear heavenly father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We ask that you bless this meeting and guide us as we conduct the business of our city. Also be with us this season and let us remember the true meaning of Christmas. We ask these things in your name, amen.
Item number four, any corrections to the minutes? None being, nobody's赞成 is approved. Item number five. Did you have anything? No. Item number five, public comment. This is time on the agenda where the public has time to come up and speak to the commission on any items that are not on the agenda and we give you five minutes. We just ask that you can forward and state your name for the record. Item number six then.
Mayor, it's my pleasure to present some of our employees with years of service awards. So I'm gonna ask you to join me down here and then we'll invite people up one by one. Full house right on. First of all, Chief Alan Shelton. Chief is celebrating 30 years of service with the Garden City Fire Department. He was Garden City Fire Department's first employee and 30 years ago. Next two aren't here, okay. The next two folks aren't here but I would like to recognize their name. They're also celebrating 30 years of service. Bob Zunis, equipment operator with the street department, and police captain Michael Yoots. So we thank them for their 30 years of service. Curtis is celebrating 20 years of service with the city of Garden City. Is Curtis here? Nope. Somebody sees him walk in here in a second row. Recognize him. And we can clap now. It's still pretty good, huh? All right, and we'd like to recognize the following employees for 10 years of service. First of all, Toby Whitman from Buffalo Dunes Golf Course. Toby is the superintendent out of Buffalo Dunes and for 10 years has been doing great work out there. Thanks Toby. Congratulations. Clint Brock. Clint is celebrating 10 years with Garden City Police Department, currently a detective that served the department in a variety of capacities. Thanks Clint. Oscar Flores with the Garden City Police Department is celebrating 10 years of service today. Lester's celebrating 10 years and currently equipment operator with the street department. There you go Lester, thanks for your 10 years of service with the city. James Daley, firefighter with the Garden City Fire Department is celebrating 10 years of service. Is James here? He going in? Nope. Congratulations. Dirk Rojas, celebrating 10 years of service with the cemetery. Dirk, thank you very much. Dirk's currently a laborer with the cemetery department. Thanks for making that place always look great. Wes Brungard. Wesley, as Luke likes it. Wes has been with the Garden City Police Department for 10 years and we appreciate all you do, crime scenes expert. Evidence man, here you go. Is Curtis here? Curtis, come on up. Where'd I put yours? Right here. Again, Curtis, 20 years with the salt mist department, we appreciate it very much. Curtis.
Oh, hold on, I'm reflecting on here.
Effective tape.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Ryan Vaughn, also with Buffalo Dunes Golf Course. Ryan's celebrating 10 years. Thanks Ryan, you've served a variety of roles out there. Currently in charge of the food and beverage and does a great job with that. Kenny, celebrating 10 years with the city of Garden City. We appreciate all you do for us. Thanks so much for being a part of the team. There you go. Kenny always waves at me when he's in his piece of equipment going about five and a half miles. Yeah, not me. Taylor Kinnler, celebrating 10 years with planning and community development. Thank you Taylor for your service. Bill Matheson. Bill Matheson, 10 years with Garden City Street Department. Bill, thank you so much, you lead a great crew. Judge Ramirez. Peter Ramirez. Judge is with me as the court. That's not a nickname, he's really good. And he's been with the city for 10 years. We appreciate your service Judge, thank you. Brett Harmon. Brett is celebrating 10 years of service with Garden City Electric Department. Brett, thanks so much for your service in the city. Donna is celebrating 10 years of service with Lee Richardson Zoo. Thank you Donna for all you do for the community. John Ursin. John is celebrating 10 years of service with John. John, John? John, no, but this, John celebrates 10 years of service with Garden City Fire Department. And thanks to all the employees and it's a pleasure to work with all of you and for those celebrating milestones, thank you for those who are reaching those milestones. We hope you reach them. Mayor, I think we're ready for 6B but we might wait just a little bit while, takes care of the cells? Do I have to do the letter? Okay. Mayor, it's my pleasure to introduce Michelle Stigman, human resources director, who will present this year's distinguished service award.
Good afternoon Mayor and Commissioners. It is the policy of this city to recognize meritorious service to the organization representing service awards to eligible employees. The distinguished service award for 2014, we have received nominations and they were reviewed by the blue ribbon committee comprised of Jill Dursch, Golden Plains Credit Union, Vice President of HR Services, and Caroline DeVal, Garden City Co-op Administrative Service Manager. They, the nominations were reviewed to see if they met the criteria, if the employee acted in distinguished service to the city of Garden City or the greater Finney County, performed above and beyond the requirements and the expectations of his or her job and related responsibilities, exemplified organizational values through the act of distinguished service, or exemplified the ethic of public servants, public service through the act of distinguished service. The committee selected Cynthia Beltran, legal clerk, victim advocate for the prosecutor's office as the recipient for the 2014 distinguished service award. And I'm just gonna give you a brief overview of why she was selected. Jennifer Cunningham, the city prosecutor nominated her because she believes Cynthia is a walking example of distinguished service both in her department and in the community. She performs her job duties admirably as the legal clerk victim advocate. Those that come to the office are greeted and helped by her gracious way of service. If there is a victim that needs assistance, she goes above and beyond just meeting with them. She is constantly looking for the best resources to help them and working hard to make sure they feel comforted by her services. When one of the prosecution support staff was out of office during 2014, she performed her job and the job duties of the other employee. She never complained when she had to work late or come in early to get things done even though it was not specifically her responsibility. She recognizes the importance of supporting coworkers and creating a cohesive work environment and strives daily at exhibiting the highest level of teamwork possible. When she obtained a second job, she chose the city of Garden City's component unit, Garden City Recreation Commission, giving more time to the community. She also volunteers one evening a week at St. Catherine Hospital, performing service wherever they need assistance. Cynthia is an asset to the prosecution department, the organization, and the community. And as an employee, she has exemplified the city of Garden City's core values, service, community, and performance, and we thank her for her dedication to the city of Garden City.
Cynthia, thank you very much for all you do for the city and you're a very deserving recipient of this award.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, item 6C is, is, oh no, it is, yeah, okay. Do you want to go ahead and go, Mr. Osper? You want to go ahead and go now? I mean, your time's at 1:30 but if you're here, yeah. Let's, item 6C, regularly scheduled for 1:30 but everybody needs to be here to hear. Continuation of a hearing regarding a nuisance violation, 2509 North Taylor Avenue. This discussion was continued following the November 4th commission meeting. We were gonna continue to the next commission meeting but the staff was still doing research, I believe, on some of Mr. Ostber's questions and so everybody agreed there aren't any weeds growing in December, so we continued it to today.
I'd just like to thank Commissioner Law for coming out and meeting and kinda going over some of the points there. I really don't have much else to add, so. Kinda leave it up to you guys.
We got the information in the packet. Did you wanna kinda discuss a little bit?
Well, you know, we definitely got some challenges out there and the main reason I asked for that was just to get a better sense of what was. And as well I said, we kinda have the existing bill, it's really what we're trying to decide on and then some of the issues were brought up and have been decided or can be worked on into the future depending on where those fell. Looks like one of the things we found out is while that's somewhat unique, it's not, you know, there's several other properties that have the same things going on and are getting them done and I think the city's in a position to take all those over and so whether or not we could take this one over, you know, probably not just because of that, you know, and then, you know, there was some question about, you know, the other properties nearby and it appears that while they don't, due to outside contractors doing the work and how things fall with staff and making follow-up inspections and wind letters actually go out or notices whatever, you know, that one might get taken care of even though the one next door, you know, needs it, well, it's in the process.
Sure.
And in fact, as we talked out there, a tractor showed up and went to work and on some of the properties onto the south, so, you know, it's not an easy thing to do but, you know, it's, it is what it is and so I understand better that what he's got going on out there and, but it appears at this time that we followed our process and so, you know, we do have this bill and.
How much is it?
You know, you remember.
Taylor, are you familiar with the?
It's gonna be between $100 and $300. We don't have the exact dollars now.
I think it's $200.
Yeah.
Right at.
I seem to recall $200.
Yeah.
I believe it's exactly $200.
Okay. And Kurt, if you have more to add to that, you know, it's, you know, he has drains and there was this, you know, question of the connecting links money and so there's a lot of questions out there and like I said, it's definitely a much more challenging area than most people have to deal with, yet as was outlined in the packet, you know, there's quite a few of them around town that are dealing with the same thing. Some of them have, you know, it's improved and some of them it's not improved and, you know, so whether they're mowing weeds over dirt or whether they're mowing some pretty good grass, you know, some of them I believe might even be a little bit bigger. Lots of them have the same drains and so it's just, it's a challenging thing but that's, that's what they have to deal with at that property unfortunately, so, you know, if there's changes to be made in the future then, you know, that's, that's for another day.
Part of my, part of my discussion is that the city does have an agreement and a resolution to maintain that from right-of-way lines, a right-of-way line, which isn't just the road surface. So there's already an agreement made and by having that resolution in the city, assuming the responsibility and liability, they receive money per lane per mile, plus federal grant money for the connecting links. So it's a pretty big deal for the city also. It's not just city property in an alleyway or something, it's, it's an actual signed document that says they're gonna assume the liability and maintenance of right-of-way to right-of-way.
Right, but I think this is. Some of the money from the state covers far, that represents that the city's receiving the funds sufficient to accomplish the maintenance of the entire runway to, from point to point. If you take the sentiment away you're saying, that, that leaves the impression that there's noodles of money that the city is signing agreement for. In fact, that amount of money pales in comparison to what it takes to maintain the road and is supplemented by the city and it's part of, it's a revenue stream into a budget that's also supported, or a department that's also supported by other funds other than the connecting link resources. Not unlike Kansas, different parts of Kansas Avenue, not unlike different parts of South Maine, not unlike different parts of Fulton. So, I get the point. It's intellectually a good argument. I mean, I, I can follow your train of thought.
I just think it's a little bit different than city property in town because by signing that resolution agreement, the city is assuming liability and maintenance for that said property.
Yeah, we understand that's your opinion.
Well, we have incurred this $200, we paid somebody, right?
Yes.
I don't know, I think it's, I mean, you point, I mean, I think he owes the money if we had to pay somebody to do it, so, be my opinion.
Janet, do you have anything?
From the letter from Kurt from Kansas Department of Transportation mentions on page two that, and they, the state knows this, that the city of Garden City has enacted an ordinance requiring adjacent landowners to maintain the subject right-of-way. And, and that the city has authority to enact such ordinance. It's that way for all the other properties in, in the city, there are similar situations as you are.
Okay. You have anything?
I can add one more.
Okay.
I talked to Sam and he was telling me if I control all the weeds, which around the rest of the property, we just kill everything so we don't have weeds. And most of it is weeds up on the right-of-way. But he said if I do that, I'm gonna have to control erosion and run off into the drainage system and, so now I'm being asked to maintain weeds, groom weeds, you know?
Well, I think.
By, by a busy road. So, I, that was my other, my other thing I could have done is to just kill everything. But I was told I can't really do that either because I'm gonna have a problem with runoff into the drainage and dirt blowing, whatever, so. I said, thank you.
We talked a little bit about that Kurt, you know, that's two drains out there and maybe the area right around the drains, but the rest of it really didn't get affect, you know, directly. I mean, if it's coming from there, it's gonna pass through any vegetation maintained around, so I think there's an opportunity to do that on a lot of it. And then if, if that's the case on right around the drain, you know, that would certainly reduce the amount of maintenance necessary, but if it would take along the curb all the way and for a lot of that, I wouldn't see why you couldn't spray and, or even maybe some kind of broadleaf, you know, rather than total vegetation killers because there is some grass growing out there that, you know, doesn't grow tall and, so, I think there's some things a person could do to reduce the amount of work. It doesn't go where you're wanting it to go unfortunately, but, you know, and then that whole, you know, how much has to be left around a drain, that's one of the things I think, you know, we work on moving forward. It's not necessarily the question up before us today, so. And, you know, the question today is, you know, was the process as it stood at the time followed and it appears that it was, right or wrong? It appears that it was.
So the, the real question is, does he have to pay the $200, correct? We just need to make a motion, yes or no on that, correct? So what does the commission want to do?
I move that we collect the $200 for the mowing of the property at 2509 North Taylor.
There's been a motion to collect the fee for the mowing at 2509 North Taylor. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Dale. Any other discussion on that? Another discussion, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Passed. Thank you very much.
Item 7A, Mayor and Commissioners, the city has received a letter from Cox Communications regarding a light-up change, which might come as a surprise.
Yeah.
Item 7B, staff has provided items of information for governing body review. Really only one report in there, it's the sales tax report from the, from the service and finance department and as you'll see, we continue to trend well. I believe Linda and I have discussed that we, this is through November, the November 25th would not have had a full, it might have had Dick's grand opening but it wouldn't have had a full month of Shoalman 2. So the December, well, it won't come out on December 25th, it'll probably come out a week before. The mid to late December report, that sales tax distribution will be the first distribution with, with the Shoalman 2 open. There is a two-month lag.
We're still ahead of last year, so.
Yeah.
It's looking good.
The trend is excellent, yeah.
Trending well.
Should hit 6 million.
If, if all keeps going like it is, yeah. Going well.
And item C, our meetings of note, it was a good turnout yesterday at the Historical Society. We appreciate their invitation to attend and got to enjoy good chili and they were playing the Our Town video from the 50s, which was really fascinating and neat to see. They were doing a nice job over there and we've appreciated their partnership this year with, at the cemetery with that new venture and the tours that they did during the Halloween Any of the other items on there that require an RSVP, we'd ask for you to do that through ceiling. With that, I think we're ready for the appropriations ordinance, item 8A, which if approved would be ordinance number 2377-2014A.
I move that we approve the appropriations ordinance 2377-2014A.
Spin a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dahl. Any other discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That motion passed. Item 9.
9A, which if approved would be ordinance number.
2675-2014.
Is an ordinance adopting the standard traffic ordinance for Kansas City's addition 2014? 2014. I'll turn this over to Randy.
Okay, after the league released the standard traffic ordinance for this year, they discovered that there were two errors in the ordinance and so I have drafted the current ordinance before you to correct those errors and they are, don't change the substance of either one of the sections. They just had two subsections in the wrong place in section 23 and in section 200, they used the wrong terminology. So I've made those changes and you simply need to approve this ordinance or STO is correct.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve ordinance 2675-2014.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Wallen. Any other discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? That passed.
Item 9B, which if approved would be resolution number-
2611-2014.
Authorizes the removal of motor vehicles from 201 East Laurel Street.
I agree, that's for the resolution 2611-2014.
There's been a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Finkhauser. Any other discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? That motion passed. I'd move on past item 10.
Item 9A, the governing body is asked to review and consider the bids for 2015 property liability insurance coverage. Turn this over to C-Lin. Or I can take it?
I think Matt should take it.
Okay.
And Joan's here.
C-Lin has worked- Oh, is Joan here? Yeah. Sorry.
That's all right, I don't want to step on your toes, but you're my question, huh? Hi, Joan Dostal with Charlesworth and Associates, 12414 Maston, Overland Park, Kansas, 6023. Thank you, Mayor, members of the commission. Good afternoon. Included in your packet is an overview of the property liability program. This project started back in August. I'm here to provide you with a brief overview and answer any questions that you might have. In early September, a public notice was provided in the Garden City telegram regarding the city's intent to seek competitive property liability proposals. As a result, three organizations responded. These organizations were provided a copy of the request for proposal as well as market assignment form. In mid-September, these market requests were due in our office. Two participants responded and they were assigned exclusive use of the markets that they had requested. And on November 13th, the proposals were due here at City Hall and we received two complete proposals, one from Travelers and one from State National Insurance. Both proposals provide excellent terms and conditions and can reasonably foresee any events and exposures that might happen within the city. The local agent, Rutter Klein, has been a great partner for the city. They put together a great proposal, answered, you know, some challenging questions that we had. Arthur J. Gallagher of Chicago is the other broker that responded. They handle themselves very professionally as well, great program. The primary difference, as was spelled out in the report, is the wind hail deductible. Based on information we received, we would recommend that the consideration, that the commission give consideration to the approval of the Travelers program that is through Rutter Klein Associates, the local agent. It's a premium of $288,639. Also included in the report is an option that the city can reduce their wind hail deductible from $50,000 per occurrence to $25,000 per occurrence for an additional $7,500. That might be something to consider. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Yes.
Question. Property insurance, Rutter Klein was $87,000 and the other one's $19,000. I don't understand why there'd be that difference.
Right, you know, the program, the State National program, they just, they price their premium on a whole program perspective and it is one of the programs where they tend to be really low on the property side somehow and then they make up for it in other areas. There's really no explanation, it's just how these companies tend to allocate premiums. Exactly, they do.
An inland marine?
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
That's more of the items that move around, you know, a lot of your equipment, any type of art, any type of contractor's equipment that's used in the city, any type of big, mobile type of equipment, things that move around.
But aren't those tagged, aren't necessarily tagged for the road?
Correct, correct.
If they're not licensed, they're also-
Because they, Rutter Klein put $32,000 in for that and the other one's included.
Right.
So it's kind of a-
And that's how the property form for State National is written. Sometimes these programs, they have a program that come, it actually has all those extra coverage just written into it. And so they will price it all as one rather than pricing out the separate items within there. I should mention also included in there, you know, in the case of a large wind hail storm or tornado, we have street signs, street lights, all those type of structures as well contemplated under inland marine.
Okay.
So the wind hail, how does that, how is it different between the insurers?
The State National program has a 2% of the building value. So for instance, we have this building valued, I believe, at about $3.1 million. So in the case of a big hailstorm or tornado takes it out, the deductible on this building alone is going to be about $62,000, okay? The program through Travelers, they have a per occurrence deductible. I mean, every building in the city could be hit with wind and hail or a tornado and your deductible is $50,000 period. So if you have a number of buildings damaged through the State National program and you could get over $100,000, you could get to half a million, it just depends. This is all per building deductible.
Okay.
I think in our analysis, through what was provided, through the request for proposals, the bottom line on the scenario and the coverage requested was a $15,000, approximately $15,000 more for the Travelers program through the local agent. However, as Joan just pointed out, that is made up for in more than likely one building getting hit during one hail event. And so you'd ask yourself, what's the likelihood of that? I mean, if you're not placing any additional value to the local agent, which we don't necessarily have a written policy for insurance packages in our purchasing policy, is that correct? We do for, but a similar, a similar policy for large equipment would allow the commission to consider a local bid over an out-of-area bid that could be as much as 2%. It's either 1%, 2%, or 3% greater. Yeah, 1% greater, which is about $3,000.
Sure.
Nonetheless, I think it's not necessarily a local preference rationalization, although we are ruled served by the local agent. It's a coverage issue of is that a good place to put insurance money or is that a good place to assume risk or do self-insurance? In western Kansas, in a hail event, $15,000 difference in premium provides you-
A lot of coverage.
Coverage where you don't just make it back in one hailstorm, you make it back in one building in one hailstorm. That's insurance you should buy every time. That's a difference that you should go ahead and purchase the insurance, would be my recommendation.
I would agree. It's, wind hail is the item we see as the biggest challenge within, especially in the state of Kansas.
Most insurance companies are, I've seen 1% deductible, but haven't seen too many 2%. That seems a little-
You know, we have seen them all over the board. We have seen them paying $100,000 in some cities. We had some recently in which they wanted, we wanted to get another city to have a $25 as an option and the carriers have just gone the line. It seems to be one of those things where it kind of depends on the time of year or just what their personal experience is in that location, they analyze spread of risk, the age of the buildings. It's kind of wild card right now, but it is, we do see those creeping up and up and up.
So what's the recommendation for the additional premium saving from 2050 to 25? Is that included in your recommendation or are we foregoing that?
No, that's included.
That's okay. Says, as noted above, the wind hail deductible can be reduced from 50 to 25 for an additional premium of $7,500.
They're not recommending that.
Okay, so it's not.
I would say that's something we're leaving up to your discretion, you know, $50,000, that's a pretty good deal considering the exposure that you have here and that's what's contemplated in the 288, 639. To reduce it from the 20, from the $50,000 to the $25,000 is $7,500. Honestly, that is a pretty good deal.
One-time.
Right.
One-time fee.
Right, exactly. That would be-
Another gamble.
Plus 15.
If it hails and it pays off, if it doesn't, then?
Then you spend an extra $7,500. That's correct.
I just didn't know, I wouldn't know for sure if that's included in this too or not.
The 288, 639 contemplates the $50,000. So it would be 296, 139 to reduce it to the $25,000 per occurrence deductible.
And the rate's up 6%.
Correct. The overall premium is up about 6%. Now, look, if we calculate, there's the cyber liability as well, which is a little coverage that's beneficial as well.
Any other questions?
Can we budget it a 10%? Any other lineups? So if you wanted to do the $7,500, I believe you'd have room to do that if that was of interest, yeah.
Do you want to gamble?
Well, I mean, it's, it's more philosophical at this point. If you like the coverage, that's great. Value-wise, it's a fair value for coverage.
Yeah.
It's, if you want to, it's not them, it's S5, so.
If we have a hailstorm, we'll be heroes.
If we don't.
If we don't. $7,500 in the big picture of things, I guess, isn't all that much. I'd make a motion that we, that we accept the bid with the $7,500 to reduce it to $25,000 and that'd be Rutter Klein slash Travelers. So it'd be 288, 639 plus $7,500.
Which was the 290?
296. 296, correct.
296, 139 would be the total. So there's a motion from Commissioner Finkhauser to accept the 2015 property liability insurance coverage with the additional $7,900, which would make it $296,139 to reduce the premium down to from 50 to 25. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Commissioner Dale, seconded. Any other discussion on that item? Motion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan. I appreciate Charlesworth's work for the city, not just when we got a market, but when we had questions during the course of the year, it's very helpful.
We enjoy working with you.
Item B. It's 2:00 yet, so.
No, that's, yeah.
It's making a hearing.
No, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong B.
New business 11.
The governing body's asked to authorize a public hearing on December 16th at 2:00 PM for the amendment to the following funds, the DEA forfeiture fund, the Fittip Trust, the 12-6813 revolving fund and the special wreck and parks fund. And Melinda, we'll-
As you know, the 2014 budget was approved in August of 2013, so there's sometimes some things that change when we go through the course of the year. So we are needing to amend some budgets so that we stay in compliance with KSA statute There are four funds that we need to amend their budgets and they are the capital improvement reserve. Basically, the justification for that is there was a larger cash carryover than we had anticipated and additional revenue coming into the fund. DEA forfeiture also had an additional cash carryover that we did not anticipate plus additional revenue. The revolving fund had a program change. We have the Windsor Hotel Project grant going through it and then the special wreck and parks had additional cash carryover that we're going to be spending here in 2014. So what we're asking for here today is that you set a budget hearing for December 16th at 2:00 PM to formally approve these changes.
So I move.
Second.
Been a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda.
Item 9C, the governing body is, or I'm sorry, 11C, the governing body's asked to consider a settlement agreement reducing the local access service charge from Wheaton Electric cooperative from $239 per kilowatt month to $1.30 per kilowatt month and approving the operations agreement of the Jameson Energy Center. Mike?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, there are actually two agreements in this, as Matt stated there. One is the local access charge that we've been charged from Wheaton Electric for use of their facilities and the other one is the Jameson Energy Center operating agreement. Both of these agreements that are in your packet have been reviewed by our outside counsel, Greg Ottinger, Duncan and Allen, as well as the city attorney and as well as our outside engineering consultant, J.K. Engineering out of Lincoln, Nebraska. Both of the agreements that's before you today were approved, I told last minute, Bruce Millen, that they were approved by the Wheaton Board of Directors and of course, Bruce is here, if you have any questions, if you have anything. Anyway, they've been approved by the Wheaton Board, so now they're before you for consideration. What I thought I would do, if it's okay, is just kind of walk you through how we got up to-
Sure.
This settlement. This is actually the, this is back in December of 2013, December 17th, Wheaton, the Sunflower filed a rate of $2.39 per KW month with the Kansas Corporation Commission, which would be the charge that they would charge us for the use of their facilities. The KCC accepted that and put it into motion effective January 1. Immediately thereafter, Garden City and KMEA intervened into that particular case, saying that that rate was not a negotiated rate and that we felt it was too high. Since that time, well, in addition with that, the reason for the $239 rate was that Wheaton Electric had anticipated improvements to their system, was going to cost about $2.2 million dollars and part of the $239, 74 cents of that was going to go towards that accruing, you know, acquiring the $2.2 million dollars for improvements. We also objected to that, that number and the type of improvements that were necessary. We waited for the Southwest Power Pool and Wheaton's outside engineering consultant to review the necessary agreements. They both come back within a few thousand dollars apiece and that number was closer to $750,000 of improvements instead of the $2.2 million. The KCC, when we intervened in that, the KCC, their main question was, was this a negotiated rate between sophisticated utilities, Garden City, KMEA, Wheaton and Sunflower? Our position was that it was not a negotiated rate. We had the choice of either accepting the $239 rate or face the possibility of having power shut off on, at midnight on December 31st of 2013. So we did, we went in and signed it, said, let's move forward, under the belief that the $239, this local access charge, would be reviewed by the Kansas Corporation Commission to ensure that the rate was just and reasonable. We have paid the $239 rate since January 1 of 2014. We continue to pay it. Through this agreement that you're going to consider, we'll continue to pay the $239 until the end of this year, December 31st. And then, effective January 1 of 2015, the new $1.30 per KW month rate will go into effect and will remain in effect until Wheaton files another local access tariff, transmission tariff with the KCC and then KCC will approve that at some point in time and whatever that approved tariff is, is what then Garden City would be obligated to pay. In the negotiations, in the settlement, Wheaton agrees that they will file a new tariff request to the KCC sometime in 2015. At the time, it appeared that it wouldn't be till towards the end of 2015, but as soon as they do, then KCC will hear it. The settlement agreement does not waive any of Garden City's rights to intervene in that rate, should we want to know more how they come up with that rate or- how to come up with that rate or question anything about that, we still have that right. The, the two, the two thirty-nine also covered improvements that were necessary to some of Wheaton's facilities. That was the two point two million that they thought they needed, and SPP come back and said it's seven hundred and thirty thousand. Those are required improvements by the Southwest Power Pool. Since we had not paid for that amount, we had not paid that amount for those improvements yet, because we were in conflict as to how much it actually was, the Jameson operating, the Jameson Energy Center, we were restricted on how we could operate that this past summer until those system improvements were made, so we wanted to make sure that we didn't damage their system or they would damage ours. In this agreement, once those improvements have been installed and completed, which will be, you know, hopefully the next six months at the latest, we, Garden City slash KMEA, will be able to operate the Jameson Energy Center as we see fit, as long as that we use prudent utility practices and we don't exceed the capacity of the Moore substation where we're currently connected to. So basically, we can't exceed thirty megawatts of generating capacity at the Moore substation, and, but for a matter of fact, we can only generate twenty-seven megawatts in the middle of the summer anyway, so we don't anticipate that as a problem. The settlement is before you. It avoided hearings that were set with the Kansas Corporation Commission to begin this month. If you concur and you agree with this settlement, then Wheaton, Garden City, KMEA, and Sunflower have all prepared the necessary paperwork to ask the KCC to forego the hearings, that we have come to settlement and basically the case will go away. Should they not agree to that and say, no, we still want to have a hearing, then we've requested that they keep the dates of December tenth, eleventh, and twelfth open, so we can have those hearings and it's not delayed for another long period of times. Sometimes with the KCC, it takes months to get in front of them to have something looked at. The credit between the two thirty-nine and the dollar thirty will go into effect January one, and will stay in effect until a new rate is filed and approved by KCC. The...
Where does the extra money go that...
Pardon?
Where does the extra money, oh, I see. So we're paying two thirty-nine...
Yeah, we'll continue...
To the end of the year, you said?
Yeah, to the end of the year, and they're twofold. One is, it was easier for accounting purposes just to do it for one more month. The other one was, is that all of those dollars, the two thirty-nine dollars above the dollar thirty, go towards the improvements that's necessary at the Moore substation, the seven hundred and fifty-some thousand dollars. We've already paid through that seventy-four cents.
Bucks...
Approximately four hundred.
Buck sixty-five, you think?
Oh, yeah, dollar sixty-five, I'm sorry. Between the dollar sixty-five and the two thirty-nine, all go towards the improvements that's required at the Moore substation. I have that number. So far to date, we've paid four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars towards that seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of improvements. So by the end of the year, it will be, it will be very close as to whether we've been charged enough for that, but we have additional funds that we've been using for these types of things, and the amount's been paid. We just, KMEA just issued a check today to Wheaton as a down payment for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to start the improvements. At the end of the day, when the improvements have been made and Wheaton has told their books, we'll have a true-up at the end of that, whether they owe us a little bit of money or we owe them a little bit additional money, but we agreed that we would true that up at the end of the, once the improvements are made. The difference between the dollar thirty-nine and the two thirty-nine, or the dollar thirty, we've been paying two thirty-nine this year in 2014, in 2015, assuming that we'll pay a dollar thirty for the entire year until their new rate goes into effect, and assuming electric loads are about the same, that's a seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars savings to Garden City from 2014 to 2015. So I know it's a lot, but in a nutshell, that's, that's the basis of that. Certainly, will answer any questions you may have, or if Bruce has any comments, or if you have any questions for Bruce, I'm sure he'd be happy to...
Once this gets improved, then we can run all three of those generators, is that right?
Once the improvements are made, then we can run those generators as we see fit.
Or we could only run two this summer.
Yeah, we could, during the summer months, as long as we don't exceed thirty megawatts of capacity on that particular transformer of Wheaton's, we can run all three. What we've done this last year, we operated those units under a test mode approximately twenty-two times, and we only ran two of them at a time, specifically for that purpose. We didn't want to cause damage to their equipment or ours, and we only ran them when it was economically feasible, once we got through the testing part to make sure everything worked. Next summer, we will operate those in that same manner. If it's more economical to run the turbines than it is to purchase it, then we'll run the turbines. The other thing that could happen is SPP, the Southwest Power Pool, who's in charge of all transmission and generation that comes online, they could call on us to run those turbines, and if they did, of course, we would run them, there again, not exceeding the limits in the agreement with Wheaton.
Okay. And they, what's the timeframe to get this improvement done?
I think it's about six months. I think it's within six months. And Mike's right, the, there's, there's some KW limits on Moore's and actually several other substations, so there's three substations. So, like Mike said, as long as those don't get over, you know, overused or overextended, the limits don't go over, the limits go good on that, but I think it's around six months. Yeah, where the equipment and stuff like that.
Six months from January, or six months from now, or?
It could be, I could just, we're waiting on the SPP final number, so as soon as they give us the, it's more of a Sunflower.
We needed, we needed July one.
July one. I'll write that down.
Yeah.
I would like to say that Wheaton's pleased that both Garden City and Wheaton were able to agree to a settlement, excepting both the city and Wheaton, so. And if you got any other questions, I'm here, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thanks.
Another thing that Bruce reminded me of is ending Jameson operating agreement in this settlement agreement. We also agreed that should Garden City choose to pay for additional improvements at another delivery point, the Yersa Kandala substation or the Garden City South substation, we could do so, go through the SPP study, pay for the improvements as required, and then we can operate Jameson in conjunction with those other points of delivery as well. So that's added, I mean, should we choose to do that, that would be a good thing. If we choose not to, that's fine too, but...
Mr. Mayor, I'd move to approve the settlement agreement, reducing local access service and approving the operations agreement of the Jameson Energy Center.
It's been moved by Commissioner Law, seconded by Commissioner Dahl. Any other discussion on that? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eleven D, wait, it's about two o'clock. Shall we do the public hearing?
I would say it's close enough. Let's just...
I'll talk slow. Item ten A. A two P M. public hearing for nineteen oh four Crestway Drive, at which the owner, owner's agent, and alien older record and any occupant of the structure may appear and show cause why the structure should not be condemned, and ordered repaired, or demolished and removed pursuant to Garden City Code. So, Mayor, I believe the appropriate first step would be to open the public hearing.
I'm going to open the public hearing for the, for nineteen oh four Crestway Drive. It is now open. Yes, sir.
My name's Mike Freezen.
Yes.
I lived in nineteen oh four Crestway for some thirty years. This house has been litigation in and out since about nineteen eighty-seven. It's a long story. I don't need to go into all the details. Suffice it to say, the, a foreclosure action was initiated way back when and dismissed on and off again, and ultimately came to a conclusion with a judgment being handed down from Bank of America. Along the way, most of the litigation was taking place with a bank called LaSalle Bank. LaSalle Bank National was a bank that held securitized mortgages that had been sold from one failing institution to another, to another, to another. Be that as it may, the, the bank, or the LaSalle Bank dissolved, and all of its directors and stockholders were eliminated or removed from liability. And throughout that, the appellate process, this case has been at the Supreme Court, their attorney never acknowledged that this was a dissolved corporation. But I contend that there is an irreplaceable, irreversible, irreconcilable breach in the chain of title when this corporation, which had been dissolved, LaSalle Bank, was permitted to transfer, really a ghost, a spirit, was permitted to transfer its cause of action to Bank of America, which may be a reason nothing's happened since the fire in December of last year. Be that as it may, I maintain that's a fatal defect. I told Mr. Allen, I certainly intended to file a quiet title action, and I did, but through, for a lot of reasons, not the least of which is I can't figure out quite who to serve, because nobody claims an interest. But I, I will try to challenge the title in court and through quiet title action, which I'm sure the city will be a part of. But be that as it may, if the title is cleared, then some blight that does exist on the property could be removed. You know, I, I don't deny that throughout this questionable period of, or period of questionable title, I, I didn't keep the property up because I wasn't sure which way it was going to go. Neither did they. They completely let the property go to waste, which is also a violation of foreclosure laws. But be that as it may, the building itself is almost an entirely concrete, a stone structure. The walls are eighteen inches thick, but four, a couple of rooms that were additions that were put in there by a previous tenant, and those two rooms were the rooms that caught fire through, I believe, faulty wiring. But there's no basic integrity, damage, damage and integrity of the structure, other than smoke. It would be my intent to clean up as soon as the action is resolved. And it could be, it would be very quick, because I can't find anybody at Bank of America that claims an ownership interest. I can't find anybody at Ocwen Federal, or Ocwen Federal Savings and Loan Closing Company, whatever it's called, goes by different names, who claim an ownership. So I've, I've had problems. And, but I would oppose the condemnation because I would, I guess plead with the city that something will happen, and it's a property that can be of some value if it's cleaned up and repaired properly, and the title cleared. Right now, I don't think that the title is such that anybody could clear it up other than myself. Nobody can cure that defect. So with that said, you know, I could try to answer any questions if there are any.
Who did we serve?
Caleb, who'd you give those to?
Notice was sent to the, the deed is, the property is deeded to Bank of America, who owns the, has the deed. That's where the notice was sent to, to the property.
So they own the property?
They do. That's, that's according to the county records, and we've been contacted by, by them, that they are aware of it, and they've asked for a continuance on this hearing as well. This is, just back, October sixth is when the fire occurred on it of 2014, and so it can be, as part of it, can be given a timeline to repair it or, or to demolish it. Since nothing has happened on it, the items were listed in the order of the things that do need to be repaired or are in disrepair at this time, with the roof damage, burned trusses, interior walls, and floor covered in anal feces and breeze from fire, dilapidated carport, damaged electrical with exposed wiring. All those items are the issues that exist in the structure, that there's a possibility that they could be repaired, but at this point, it's been quite a while that nothing has occurred on the property, and we have been contacted by Bank of America asking for a continuance on this for...
Well, the, the attorney asked that, that any order be stayed fourteen days or so. It was my understanding that if an order's issued to repair or raise the structure, that, that would be within sixty days. Is that right, Caleb?
Yes.
So depending on what you want to do, if you issue an order for whoever the title holder is to repair or remove the structure, I'd ask that that order go into effect December sixteenth. That's fourteen days from today. The attorney thought that he might have some direction from Bank of America as to what they wanted to do with the structure before that time. Mike, was this issue of the title, chain of title raised in the foreclosure action?
Well, the, the issue with regard to the dissolved corporation, yes, it was. It was never ruled. It was just ignored. I did file an affidavit to that effect, setting forth the facts, which is a record in the register.
And we're not discounting your argument or your position, it's just that what we rely upon is the deed, the share of deed to Bank of America in giving the notices. And you'll have essentially seventy-six days, you or Bank of America, if you are going to file an appeal that may stay this whole proceeding, certainly we'd respect that if that comes down from the district court or appellate court.
Are you current, current under payments, is that...
Oh, no.
Oh, it's foreclosed, so you put...
And I don't have any problem, Caleb, in providing Mr. Freezen with any notices that you send, at least according to him, as disputed. We don't do things by secret here, so if you want to provide notices, copy the order and everything to Mike, as well as Bank of America, I'm fine with that. I think the commission would be too.
Yeah, we just need to get his contact information, and we can have...
I would appreciate it.
Thanks.
Yeah, the, the settlements can be adjusted accordingly to...
So we need to set the date, December twelfth, or?
Well, to December... The orders take effect December sixteen.
Sixteen.
And then I think the proposed order is to have something done on the property within sixty days.
Well, commence within thirty and plan lives within sixty, so.
Correct.
Beginning December sixteenth, and I would make that motion. Beginning December 16th, and I would make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Law, second by Commissioner Finkhauser. To start. Well, the order began on December 16th for a 60-day enforcement, right?
30, 30 days to commence and 60 days to complete.
Complete.
From December 16th.
Any other discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed. Thank you.
Caleb, why don't you give Mr. Friesen's contact information so that we can send it part of it? Do you send that by first-class mail or certified, send those orders and things out?
I believe they are sent certified.
I still have your mail, 1904 Crest West, can you use mail up there?
Okay. I will send it to that address then.
I'll close the, I guess we should have closed it after...
Should have closed it before you. You might go ahead and...
I'll close the public hearing.
Close it, your vote on the, which, order again.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. All right. There was a motion and a second. Hey, I'm gonna deal with this, so. Motion and a second, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passed again. Okay, thank you.
Item 11D, the governing body is asked to consider and approve the 2015 City of Garden City Legislative Policy. Ashley, do you want to present these, and I'll go run them.
You don't agree on it, I can grant it to him.
That works too.
Forgive me, Commissioners, I have been on vacation and failed to prepare for this meeting accordingly. The legislative policies as presented to you, the only changes in them are the changes that we discussed that we would make at the work session on the legislative policy. Of note is the language in the water section. I worked with Commissioner Law on that, incorporating some of the language that we have worked on for the SKC Legislative Policy, which I believe is also on the agenda today. Yeah, right there, underwater use. A few of the other additions were, were the incorporation of the, under transportation, we created a new transportation section for the state legislative policy to address some highway funding. And intergovernmental dialogue right there on that page, on page six, was a new section that we used language from the League of Kansas Municipalities Policy Board. So those were the major changes to this year's SKC policy. As you can see, we've also split it into a federal edition and a state edition, as we have done the past two or three years, as a way to prevent people from having to go through four or five pages of things that don't really relate to them. And we also, when we did that, created a little white space where we added some photos from our community.
Never a bad thing.
Looks good. Any questions for Ashley on state or federal?
Look, I think this legislative policy looks really good, not just from a substantive standpoint, but just the appearance of it is very nice. I think our delegates will enjoy thumbing through it and hopefully...
Very nice.
Digesting the message.
Good job. Any questions for Ashley on...
I'd make a motion, we approve the 2015 Southwest Kansas Coalition...
No, we're on city.
Oh, city. Excuse me.
There's a motion to approve the 2015 City of Garden City Legislative Policy documents. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Dale, second. Any other discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed. Item E.
The City of Garden City is asked to consider and approve the 2015 Southwest Kansas Coalition Legislative Policy. The cities Dodge City and Liberal have or will soon consider the same as per our agreement that creates the Southwest Kansas Coalition for the, for the group and our shared resources to collectively register and lobby on behalf of the three cities and now a fourth city who's joined as an associate member on the matters outlined in this policy. All three of the original members would have to approve the policy. So for this to become the platform of the Southwest Kansas Coalition, it would require your approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Dale. Motion by Commissioner Finkhauser, any other discussion on that? None other being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Item F.
Yeah, item F, we've got several...
Thank you, Ashley.
...appointments. First, for the Landmark, Landmarks Commission. Kurt Kenny's term is set to expire. He's expressed an interest in serving again. Bruce Glass is currently serving his second term, which at one point in time would have necessitated a term limit, I guess. And it is, I guess, the current policy of the government by. He has expressed an interest in serving again. There are currently two other vacant positions on this board. Caleb can talk to you more about the overall outline of the board. Valerie Hess has expressed an interest in the Landmarks Commission as well. We'll take these one at a time.
Sure.
Currently with the expiration of, the, those that are on there, we still have two vacancies that still need to be filled on the Landmarks Commission as well. So it's one of the, with the Landmarks Commission, it's been one of those that are, because it does give requirements for each one of the, whether they're a history teacher or an architecture or interest in history, there's, have, I believe, three of those positions on that board need to be filled by someone with that interest in that ground that can assist in determining as historic properties come up. And so we just recommend getting, filling that so we can have a, it's very difficult right now, we have the bare minimum numbers to have a corps. All of them need to be present in order to have a corps, so...
So you said a history teacher or what?
We've had history teachers that qualify as that position, architects, architects, historians, anyone with degrees in history or other...
You don't want two architects on there at the same time.
Yeah.
They can't agree.
So, but yes, we, it just makes that board function when we have a full group. This is one that has been difficult to fill positions for, especially with, a lot with the term limitations on some of those. So we just encourage you to fill those positions as soon as possible.
So you say there's a term limit?
Well, there's, for all the positions, there are terms of two terms.
Two terms, sorry.
Two terms.
And we have waived that.
Right.
Yes.
So a motion for Bruce Glass and Kurt Kenny and Valerie Hess waiving the term limit of Bruce Glass to appoint the Landmark Commission, so moved?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And seconded by Commissioner Dahl, is there any discussion on that motion? Did you get that?
So there's two vacant positions.
There's still two vacant, where, where he made a motion for Kurt Kenny, Bruce Glass, and Valerie Hess, there's still two open positions, right? Or one open position there? Because we put Valerie in there, okay, then one open position. Any other discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Commissioner Dahl.
Item 11F2 is appointment to the Planning Commission. Brian Weber's term will end December 31st, and he's not putting his name in for consideration for a second term. And so there has been a number of citizens who've expressed interest in this seat. Scott Stewart, Brian Schwent, Chris Gronquist, Vicki German, Kim Endry, and Valerie Hess.
We just have to pick one, is that what you're asking us to do? And we put Valerie on the Landmarks.
You just placed Valerie on the Landmarks Commission, so...
Vicki German's pretty, she's been involved, she's a realtor, been involved in house building and...
She's been on the list several times, too.
Yeah. She may be a good person to fill that.
Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion.
So there's a motion for Vicki German to be on the planning to take Brian Weber's position, is it by Commissioner Finkhauser? Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Dale. Any other discussion on that item? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Three.
Garden City Board of Zoning Appeals, Bruce Glass is a member of the Garden City Board of Zoning Appeals, whose term is set to expire December 31st, 2014. He's expressed a desire to serve another term on this board. Is this an appointment that is part of the Landmarks, that has to be somebody from the Landmarks Commission?
This is a separate...
Separately appointed.
And he's on there just because he's an architect or just wanted to serve?
No, he was serving, expressed interest in that.
They only meet, what, whenever there was an issuing of that.
Maybe it's been monthly. So, but...
I move we approve Bruce Glass.
There's been a motion to approve Bruce Glass. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Commissioner Law is seconded. Any other discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed.
Roger Unruh is a, is a member of the Building Safety Board of Appeals.
Just a quick question on the, oh, and it's on the Board of Zoning Appeals on your spreadsheet here, the deadline for, well, some of the deadline, the term expirations, is Ken going off that, Ken Rischel going off?
No, the, there's a Board of Zoning Appeals member who is a planning commissioner. The planning commissioner appoints one of theirs to...
Oh, okay, so instead of just...
Right.
Okay, that's what I needed, thank you. So then that's correct, and it just...
Yeah.
Because I'm like...
That'll be taken care of through then.
Yep, okay, that's what I needed.
For the building, this is item 11F4, the Building Safety Board of Appeals. Roger Unruh is a member of the Building Safety Board of Appeals, whose term expires, who has already expired. Mr. Unruh has expressed an interest in serving another term.
I move we appoint him.
Been by Commissioner Finkhauser, seconded by Commissioner Dahl to reappoint Roger Unruh on the Building Safety Board of Appeals. Is there any other discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed. Item F5, Garden City Rec Commission.
The Garden City Recreation Commission is looking for a reappointment for the term of Tori Muller. This term will start in January 2015 and end in 2019. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I re-read, I read that wrong. Not replacing Tori Muller. They're seeking reappointment. Tori, Ms. Muller replaced the unexpired term of Polly Chandler. So Tori is asking for reappointment, and that's the request of the Garden City Recreation Commission. There are others who've expressed an interest through the city's citizen input form, and I don't have those, I think there's three, I don't know. Verna Weber, Monique Davidovich, and Jamie Warren.
We approve Jamie Warren to serve on the Garden City Rec Commission.
There's a motion by Commissioner Dahl for Jamie Warren to serve on the Garden City Rec Commission. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion on that motion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed. Moving on, any, are there any others on that? Looks like we're done with that.
Items G1 through 7...
Double B?
Double B. And there's no, like, no changes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, seven, or G1 to 7BB.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Dale, second. Any discussion on that? None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed. We have an executive session.
We don't anticipate any action after the executive session, so if you want to do your reports, we can close down Channel 8.
Okay, we'll start with Commissioner Finkhauser.
First of all, I'd like to thank all those that received awards today and, and all the employees of the city actually do a great job. I'd like to thank the staff and volunteers that put the lights up at Stevens Park, looks very good. And also the businesses that have decorated out front of their businesses on Main Street. It looks great. So that's all I have.
Commissioner Law.
You know, congratulate all the employees and, you know, of all the awards they give, longevity is probably the most important, you know, to the city and the people, you know, because that's, that's so important to have people that stay and do their job really well, and that helps us all out. So appreciate that and those people very much. A few weeks ago, I had a contact about the tally trail lighting, and so I was wanting to get an update on, which I think there's just some lights need cleaning and maintenance along the way, and this was mostly to the west side, but I'm sure we went and probably evaluated the entire trail to make sure all the lights. And in light of the Wichita deal recently, and, you know, then that seems like if we need to do a little bit more of that, that would be very timely. Gets dark earlier right now, so I'm sure we use even more than normal this time of year. I also had another question from somebody about the drainage ponds that are growing out east, and, you know, what's, what's required of that as far as, you know, they're not city, but, you know, at what point do they need to be fenced or protected? And so I'm just throwing that out there that, and I was hoping that Engineer Kottrell would raise his hand, and by golly, he did. And now maybe want somebody else to speak?
As soon as the, all the excavation is done, they will be fenced. We're working that out with drainage and the developers adjacent, so.
You know, shallow ones, maybe not too big a deal, but that's, that's getting deep enough that, after rating it, that's going to be a pond, you know?
We'll get them both.
Fishing pond.
Is there a requirement there, or how's that handled? Just best practice?
It's a best practice thing. There wasn't a requirement at the time they were dug, but when we made it a little deeper, it was kind of borderline, and now that it's deeper, deeper, I think we're past borderline.
Those technical terms of borderline and deeper, deeper?
What about putting up temporary denting?
Equipment's moving around, shaping and all that, it gets to be kind of...
Yeah. As long as we're still actively working, it would be a hard thing.
That's all I have.
All right, thanks. Thank you. Commissioner Dale.
Congratulations to all the employees on their service records. It just goes to show that, that our faith in, in our employees and being the number one assets we have as the, as the city, is the people that work for us and do the jobs. We just sit here and make decisions, and they do what they have to do. So I take my hat off to each and every one of them. Want to compliment Cynthia on her distinguished service award. I mean, if you listen to what all she does, she doesn't wait very long before she takes on challenges and does a great job, so I think that young lady is doing a great job there. Christmas parade... Christmas parade is a week from yesterday.
Sunday.
Sunday, yeah.
Well, it's next Sunday, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're confusing us.
But I hope everybody out there in, on Channel 8 land, and the paper will push it up, but last year's was just a beautiful day, it was, the lights were beautiful. If no one's ever attended it, they would just really miss out on something that's put on downtown, and that's, that's a lot of work for the police department, and fire department, the electrical department, and everybody's involved in that. It was just great last year, and I suspect this year will be even better if we, if we get all the lights up downtown. I saved everybody at the chili feed yesterday, at the Fannie County Historical Chili Feed. I know it was, it was well worth the effort to go down and have some good chili, but I didn't figure anybody wanted exposed by the germs I was carrying, so I give you all the great, that's all I have.
Give our history, we'll give it to you today.
Commissioner Dahl.
I'd like to congratulate all the long-term employees, and all the other employees to dedicate themselves to the City of Garden City. And I'd like to congratulate Cynthia Beltran for her distinguished service award, quite a young lady. And, I think so.
And I'd just like to echo what the other commissioners said about the employee awards, and for the longevity, as well as the distinguished employee, I mean, it's, it always shows, one, longevity, that we have great employees that are serving our community well for long periods of time, but then, you know, the distinguished employee award just shows that somebody that goes above and beyond the call, and really, truly tries to help improve the community on their own, and inspire other employees, so great work for that. That's all I have, for now. At that, at this time, we will go into executive session, consideration of...
I'd recommend that we start the executive session at 2:45.
Okay.
Mr. Sek, who is going to join us, had a hearing scheduled today for 2 o'clock, and he said closer to 3 would be better, so about 2:45, we'll give the call.
Go into the executive session, okay?
Or I would say about, let's say afternoon, 30 minutes.
I, so I move that we go into executive session.
At 2:45 for 30 minutes?
2:45. And we're, well, Michael Sek, who is the city's defense counsel in the, in the matter, I'm also going to ask that Jacob Cunningham be included in the executive session, as well as Mr. Allen and myself.
So, you made the motion, to start at 2:45 for 30 minutes, to have Michael Sek, Jason Cunningham, Van Allen, and Randy Brazil.
Is there a second?
Yeah, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passed.